Michaels.
Here.
Mitchell. Petrie.
Here.
Quisenberry.
Here.
Richards.
Here.
Rosales. Schrader.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Alex.
Here.
Burksen.
Here.
Carter. Coort. Esri.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Hartke.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kurtz.
Here. We have a quorum. Mr. Mitchell is raising his hand, so he's in attendance, and here's Mr. Langenhaim. Okay. I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes, Committee of the Whole, August 13, 2013. Mr. Carter, Mr. James, thank you. Any changes or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion for approval of the agenda and addendum, please. Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Esri, second. Any changes to the... Mr. Alex.
I'd like to remove item 9I3 under Finance.
9I3. Okay. Under the county administrator.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Number three. All right. Any other changes to the agenda? Are all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have no public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to speak or forever hold their peace? I'm going to quickly close public participation. We haven't had zero. We may get out of here before 10 o'clock, hopefully. And so, public participation is closed. Do we have any communication from... Ah, Mr. Mitchell.
I just sent this out late today, but it's building a foundation for your success. It's that...
Do we have a copy of that?
It's a... It was sent to you by email.
Oh, okay.
But anyway, just kind of wanted to give you an update as far as the tourism in Champaign County. We are a member, and the tourism... And I won't bore you with the statistics, but within the report, it's got what's direct spending in Champaign County with the tourism jobs and tax receipts for the county and the state. So, anyway, if you have a chance, be able to look at that. And just let you know that there's a lot of things going on. They work with small entities and large deals like the Corvette Gold, but they're also award-winning marketing team. So, anyway, just give you an update, and it was sent out to you late this afternoon.
Thank you. Actually, we do have, if you look at your desk, there is a communication from a Ms. Anne Brown concerning the continuation of the help desk at the courthouse, and I will enter it into the record. Each of you have a copy. Mr. Rosales?
Just wanted to acknowledge that I was present.
Okay. Mr. Rosales is present. Thank you. Let's... Any other communication at this point? All right. Let's move on to Justice and Social Service. Ms. Burksen? Okay, okay. Caught you right in the mid... Sorry about that. You don't usually go first, so...
First, we have a presentation from Animal Control.
Forgive me. Good evening. I'm Stephanie Joss. In case you don't remember or we didn't meet last time at the budget meeting, the Director of Animal Control here for Champaign County. I'll try to make this pretty simple. Not a lot has changed in Animal Control over the years, but I'd like to keep you up to date on what's going on and how many animals we handle and process each year. So, our first slide is the dog and cat registrations. These are the registration tags that we sell. When a pet receives a rabies vaccination, it's by law required to have a rabies registration tag. And you can see that we're about between 12,000 and 11,000 each year. That's pretty normal. The cats are anywhere from 5,000 to 5,400, but they stay about 5,000. We're at about an 80% registration rate, so there's about 20% of the citizens in the county who vaccinate their pet but don't register it. And there's... I have no idea how many people there are that have pets, don't vaccinate, or register them. I don't have any stats on that. But we're pretty high in the state as far as compliance with registration. 80% is pretty high. And then, the next slide is the number of animals impounded. So, for 2012, we saw 908 dogs for the year and 640 cats and 25 animals, which we classify as other. That's anything from guinea pigs to hamsters. We had an iguana last year. We had a feeder hog. So, anything that's domestic but doesn't fall into that dog or cat area. You can see we're down in numbers, and it's been pretty consistent since 2009. I don't really have a good explanation for that. It just is what it is. This year, we're back on track to have probably close to 1,000 animal dogs and about 800 cats for the year. So, last year was just kind of... I don't know if it was maybe it was so hot, nobody wanted to run around. That might be the only excuse that I have. And as you can see, the majority of the animals are brought in by the Animal Control Officers, and then we also accept stray animals over the counter. So, that's the OTC is over the counter. The next slide is the number of breakdown of the cats that were impounded and what happened to them. I always... This is actually in two places in the report, but I like to see the percentages, and I like to see compared to everything. We had a 6% reclaim rate for cats. That's only 41 of the 640 cats that came through our facility were reclaimed by their owner. That's pretty normal. It's actually up. Since 2006, we only had a 4% reclaim rate. So, we're seeing a little bit higher increase in the number of cats that are being returned to their owner, and I think that's due to microchipping, which is a form of ID that's under the skin, and we highly encourage microchipping for all pets. The largest group of cats went to Cat Tales Feline Rescue. That is a rescue that is run by the veterinarian that works for the county. She took 334 cats, so nearly half the cats that came through our facility were transferred to her for adoption. We don't do any adoptions from our facility, so we depend on these other groups to do the adoptions for us. And then, unfortunately, 231 cats were euthanized last year, but that number has actually been decreasing over the years, and I'm very happy to see that. We had 11 cats transferred to the Humane Society. They obviously have their own cat issues, and so we have never really transferred very many cats to the Humane Society. We've always just kind of learned to deal with it. And then, we had 20 cats, mostly kittens, die at the shelter last year, and those are usually animals that fail to thrive. They just aren't going to make it, no matter where they're at. So, the next slide are... Is the breakdown of the dogs that were impounded, 908. We had about a 40% reclaim rate for dogs. That's down from 45% last year, but we're pretty consistent in the reclaim rate numbers for dogs. We transferred 129 dogs to the Humane Society last year, and that number is up as well. And then, we transferred 10 dogs to other groups, so that would be other rescue groups that... Or other shelters. If an animal came from an animal shelter in Coles County, we would transfer that animal back to them, so that accounts for those 10. And we euthanized 339 dogs last year. This number is pretty consistent over the years. Most of the dogs that we see at our facility are there because they have significant issues, and the people have given up on them. That's why they don't get reclaimed. Most of the dogs that are reclaimed by their owners are reclaimed in the first 48 hours that they're at our facility. And then, we had two dogs die at the shelter last year. Both of them were extremely old, and I think they had been dumped out in the county to die, or they wandered off, but both of those dogs were ancient. And then, we adopted out two dogs, both of them to staff members, because we don't technically do adoptions from our facility, but I do like to count those as, you know, those dogs went somewhere. So, we did adopt out two dogs. And then, I have a breakdown of the impounds... The dogs impounded by where they came from. Obviously, the city of Champaign is our largest customer, followed by the unincorporated areas of the county. And then, it just kind of gives you an idea of where in your area the animals, you know, the number of animals that are coming from your city or your village. And they're all pretty consistent over the years. They're down this year because... Or last year because we obviously didn't have as many dogs. And then, a breakdown of the cats. Again, Champaign, our largest customer there, followed by the unincorporated areas of the county. But cats are on the decrease. Thank goodness. So, the next slide is actually just... You can see the comparison over the years from 2008 to 2012, the number of dogs that are reclaimed and where all the animals go. And you can see we're pretty consistently, across the board, equal. Everybody's going, you know... We're having 435 dogs returned to owner... Or 2011, and 360. We had more dogs in 2011, so it equals out to about 40% again reclaim rate for dogs. Our next slide are the number of animals euthanized. 339 dogs, 231 cats, two other animals, and they were both rabbits that were lethal. They were really mean. So, they stick out in my mind. That's why there were only two. But most of the pocket pets get transferred to the Humane Society, but we had two rabbits that were... I don't know. They were rabid or something. They were crazy. Our next slide is our low-cost or free surgeries. We do have a free pit bull program, so we will spay and neuter any pit bull in Champaign County at no charge to the owner. We only charge them for the microchip and the rabies tags, so there is a $25 fee for that, and we did 77 of them last year. We're down a little bit because we didn't get our donation that we usually get every year for this program. So, we are down about 20-some dogs from the year before because it was solely... We ran out of money, basically. And then, we did 69 low-cost dog and dog spays and neuters. Those are for the low-income citizens of the county. We charge $65 for animals under 50 pounds and $85 for animals over 50 pounds, and that includes their heartworm tests, the surgery, and anything they need to go home. And then, we only spayed 160 cats for 2012, and that's down considerably from 2011. And there's several reasons for that. One of them is there's a lot more choices for people to select from. There's Cat Snap, there's the Humane Society, there's Prairie Land. There's, you know, probably 12 different options to get your cat spayed or neutered. Some of them are free, some of them are $20. Ours is 40. We didn't... We also did not have our three large clinics that we have with the U of I Vet Students last year. We couldn't get it coordinated, so that's why there's a huge decrease in the number of cats that were spayed and neutered. These are just the cats that were done by our vet at our facility. Our next slide are calls for service. Champaign, our biggest customer. They dwarf everybody, so we spend most of our time in the city of Champaign. We then spend our, you know, driving around the unincorporated area of the county with 629 calls. And we will see kind of a slight increase in the number of calls for this year for the city of Urbana as they lost their Animal Control Officer, moved on to another position, so we've been filling in for them for a couple of months now. So, we'll see a slight increase for the city of Urbana. But everything is pretty much normal there for calls for service. 2012, dangerous and vicious dogs. We didn't have any vicious dogs for 2012. That's excellent. We had four dangerous dog investigations, and all four dogs were declared dangerous. The county has a dangerous dog ordinance, and if a dog approaches a person in a threatening manner or bites a person, it can be declared dangerous. It is a label that the dog wears for the rest of its life, and there are some requirements that the people are... Have to follow in order to keep the dog. And then, we come to revenues, and I noticed that there's a mistake, because this is like my weakest area here. I really stink at this part. But in the grants and donations, it says in the total that we had $580. I don't know where the computer came up with that, because it was supposed to total the column, but we only received $125 in donations last year. And then, in the sale of fixed assets, it should... The total should be $2,260. So, I apologize for that. I have no idea how that happened. I've read this like eight million times, and so I don't know how I missed that. But that's the revenue, the breakdown of the revenues. We have, you know, split our budget, so we are now able to really get a good handle on expenses and revenues broken down by each little segment of our department. And then, the expenditures. You know, this is pretty much mirrors the budget, but it's a little bit simpler for maybe the public to read rather than read through the entire budget thing, so I always kind of stick that in there for us dumb folks. And then, comes the animal bites, and I won't spend a lot of time on this, because this is kind of where, if you're only interested in animals, people really don't care about this stuff. But we had 297 dog bites and 109 cats. And then, we had 73 bites that were reported to us, but the victim never listed what bit them. We were never able to find the victim, but when they go to the hospital, it is reported to us, and so I have to add that into our figures. Yes.
Did we have a lot of squirrel bites this time, too?
We actually were down on squirrel bites. I think the U of I finally got the word out, "Don't pet the squirrels." And I think they also might have trapped a few to get those more aggressive ones. But yeah, the squirrel bites down this year. Thank goodness. And then, it's been down by city. Champaign, our biggest customer. City of Urbana. The city of Urbana is kind of high because the Humane Society is there, and they have a high concentration of animals. So, the city of Urbana is a little bit skewed because of that. They probably... The city itself probably doesn't have quite that many bites, but the Humane Society is there, so unfortunately, they get all those numbers. And then, if you're really interested, you can call me, and we could talk about the breakdown of victims' ages and animals altered at the time which they bought, you know. I'd be more than happy to... But I'm pretty sure you guys don't want to go through that tonight. And that concludes everything that I have for this evening, and I can answer any questions anyone has about Animal Control.
Now that you have looked over last year's budget and you've prepared the next year's budget, do you... Are you comfortable with the fee schedule for the various communities and villages that you have contracts with, or will you be needing to raise some of those fees?
I think we're going to have to look into raising the impound rate. Currently, we charge the cities and villages $10 per animal. That has not changed since we opened in 2005. So, obviously, those costs are kind of increasing, and so we need to really look at what the true cost is to house a cat versus a dog, because it's a little bit more to house cats than dogs. Seems weird, but that's the case. So, I think we'll probably be looking at an increase in the impoundment. But the services, it's kind of... I'm kind of conflicted on the services, because I know the Village of Longview doesn't have the same money that the city of Champaign has, and I don't want to overburden these villages to where they can't afford the service when they really need it. So, it's one of those things where I think we might have to, in the next year or so, come up with a good plan on how to handle those increases for the employment costs and insurance and all those things.
May I have a follow-up question?
Sure.
I just a point of clarification. Is that something you want to implement in the 2014 budget, or you're thinking ahead for the 2015 budget?
It would be probably the 2015 budget.
All right. Thank you very much.
But the impound would probably be for the 2014. But the service would be later.
Thank you.
Ralph?
What's the difference between a dangerous and a vicious dog?
The state law says that a dangerous dog is a dog that approaches a person in a threatening manner or kills a companion animal or bites a human being. A vicious dog is a dog that actually kills a human or inflicts serious physical injury. So, we had, I think in 2008, a dog that was declared vicious. It jumped a fence and mauled a little... A five-year-old girl so severely that she's still, to this day, having plastic surgery. So, that dog was declared vicious, but it's a huge standard, and it actually has to go... A judge has to decide whether or not the dog is vicious based on the definition. But dangerous is a little bit... It's a lower standard.
Lorraine?
Yeah. What criteria do you use when you euthanize an animal?
I'm sorry. What?
What criteria?
What do we do to decide which animals are euthanized?
Yes.
Well, if we can't get them out of the cage, that's my first indication that they're probably not suitable for adoption. We behavior test them with other dogs. We behavior test them with food. Then, whatever agency we transfer it to, the Humane Society primarily, they come and they do their own set of tests. So, it has to pass our test and their test in order to be adoptable. So, a lot of the dogs that we see are friendly with people, but they're aggressive with other animals. And so, that is... That's the one that they flunk the most. The part of the process they flunk.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks. You guys have a great evening.
Like a motion to receive that filed? Lorraine? Mr. Maxwell? Mitchell. Max Mitchell. Okay. Any discussion? Am I vote? Would it receive them? Can we do them all at once?
Just do that one first.
That one first. All right. Should we... Any discussion of whether we should receive it and place it on file? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the rest of the monthly reports?
Make a motion to receive and place on file all monthly reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there other business that I don't know about? And the chair's report is just going through the task force report, which you already have, and sort of telling you how much money it'll take this year. Okay? So, you'll know that we want to save that much money out of the budget for the task service things. The pre-trial services, now presumably that'll go in the sheriff's thing, and he's already putting money into it. So, you know, I'm glad he's putting his money where we want it to go, because once he has it, we can't control it. But he is putting it... And number two, access to behavioral health programs. The Mental Health Board has already put a lot of money and changed its contracts to put that more in force. The Effective Substance Abuse Intervention Prairie Center is chasing down a detox center and gathering money from all sorts of institutions. So, we sort of have a start, but we need all this money. The... One I want to mention is children with parents in jail. Anyone who has children knows that young children are creatures of touch and smell, and they can't touch and smell their parents through the window. They have a closer relationship with their bankie than they do with their mother. And I think we ought to have touch and hold visitation for children who have parents in jail. I think it's long, long overdue, and I think it's terribly important for both the parents and the children. And that sort of does me. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you, Esther.
Okay. Let's move on to policy, and that's Mr. Quisenberry. Would you like to take the chair, sir? Thank you. Would you like to take the gavel?
All right. Good evening. The first thing that we have on policy personnel and appointments is an appointment for the Champaign County Housing Authority Resident Commissioner for a term to start September 19th, 2013, and run through July 31st, 2015. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to... I have Ms. Jama... You'll make the call. Jama Lynn Thomas is my appointment for the two-year term on the Housing Authority.
Ralph is the... You are the mover. He's the setter. Okay.
Right.
Would you like to speak to your selections?
Well, I've interviewed... You know there has been a controversy at the Housing Authority. Our responsibility as per state's attorney is to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Neal for these two years to 2015. Three of these are resident housing people, and they responded to an application for this commission job for resident housing. And I interviewed each of them extensively Friday and yesterday and chose Ms. Thomas as the appointee for this commission. I think she'll do a good job. You'll see her resume behind her application in your packet. I think she brings a passion for... She's been living for many years in Section 8 housing and has a good grasp of what's taking place there, and I think she'll bring a fresh view to the commission for these next two years.
All right. And I will like to point out for the board and for people watching, I believe this position is being nominated to fill the term until a resident election can be held based on HUD requirements. Okay. So, that's why we're doing it now until that next election can occur. So, any comments or questions? Patsy?
Yes. Just for the record, this evening, I am going to vote no. This is quite an important appointment, and I've only had a chance to speak to one of the applicants, and I would like to have the time to speak to the other two applicants before the final vote at the county board meeting. And second, again, I mentioned that it would be very useful to have up on the HACC website and also on the county website a copy of the intergovernmental agreement as to how these appointments to this board are handled between our three entities, Champaign, Urbana, and the county. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Next, we have an appointment for the summer number one drainage district, an unexpired term ending August 31st, 2016. Mr. Chair, your motion.
Thank you. Motion for Mr. Earl Waller to be designate for this drainage district.
Mr. Esri, seconds. Again, actually, there's only one applicant in this situation, so... Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next, for the drainage district number two, town of Scott, an unexpired term ending August 31st, 2016.
I move Mr. Roger Armstrong.
Second by Mr. Jay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passed. Next, for the Harwood, Harwood and Kerr Drainage District, an unexpired term ending August 31st, 2016.
I move Mr. Brian Schluter.
Seconded by Mr. James. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, and, and last, in the appointments area, we have a resolution to fix a term that was not appropriate for the appointment of Jim Randall to the Zoning Board of Appeals and entertain a motion. Mr. Esri moves, seconded by Ms. Burksen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, moving along, we have the report of the county clerk. I don't see the clerk tonight, so he can't answer any questions, but I'd entertain a motion to accept and place on file. Mr. James moves, seconded by Mr. Mitchell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And next, we have the county administrators, administrative services report for August. Anything you want to call out, Deb? Any questions from the board? Well, take a motion to accept and place on file. Moved by Mr. Jay. Seconded by Mr. Harper. Any questions for Deb? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, and Ms. Bucy, would you give us an update on the 2013 Champaign County Employee Recognition Week?
Yes, the events for employee recognition this year will be similar to what they were last year. The information is on page 20 of your packet. I would encourage you all to mark your calendars. The event for most employees is at the Urbana Civic Center on Tuesday, October 29th, from 11:30 to 1:00. This is the event where we like to have county board members present to help with the presentation of the awards to the employees, so we would strongly encourage you and invite you to be at that event. Similarly, the nursing home will have an event on Wednesday, October 30th, at 2:00 PM, and members of the county board and nursing home board of directors are all encouraged to attend that event as well.
Thank you. I do not have, is there any other business for policy personnel appointments that someone wants to bring up? Okay, I do not have a formal chair's report, and I will tell you that Mr. DeThorne has reviewed our closed session minutes and recommend that they remain closed, so I would entertain a motion to retain our current minutes as closed. Mr. Mitchell, seconded by Mr. Kibler. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Okay. For consent agenda, I have A, two, three, four, and five. And A1 will not be on consent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Quisenberry.
Can I save time for Mr. Alex?
Save time for Mr. Alex. Mr. Alex, finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item under finance is the treasures report. Mr. Welch cannot be here this evening, asked that his report be received and placed on file, and I would entertain a motion to do so. Mr. Kibler and Ms. Coort. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two from the treasure is a resolution authorizing the county board chair to assign mobile home tax sales certificate of purchase. We've seen these before. May I have a motion? Ms. Michaels and Mr. Mitchell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is the auditor. Mr. Farney is also not here this evening, asked at his request. Is he here? Oh, you're sitting in the wrong place.
Hiding in the corner.
I didn't realize you were sitting there, you're sitting there in your private section.
Five o'clock shadow.
I, I figure if I can't grow it up here, I'll grow it here for a while.
Mr. Farney, your report, please.
I just asked that you accept it and place it on file. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Motion by Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Kibler. Any comments? I would point out that the auditor provided a copy of the purchases not following, purchasing, purchases not following purchasing policy report.
The usual things, crossing fiscal years, a couple of paid with tax and paid without a receipt. Remember, anytime someone pays with tax, we ask that they do the legwork to have the tax refunded, and sometimes it takes a while, but they end up on this report if they're taking too long.
All in favor of accepting the treasures, or excuse me, the auditor's report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving along to the nursing home report, we have Mr. Hartke and Mr. Maxwell here. There's a, was a memo sent out by email from Mr. Maxwell. We have the nursing home financial information, and we actually tonight, for a later item, have Mr. Gima and Ms. Novke here as well, so we should probably be able to get all our questions answered tonight. Any comments or questions for our representatives on the nursing home board? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to receive and place on file the nursing home report. Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Hartke. Any discussion? Mr. Kurtz.
Yeah, thank you. From what I could tell, the census is up, and that's a good thing. And from Gary's report, we've broken even so far this year in seven months. Is that correct, sir? That's all I have to say. Thank you. Sounds good to me.
Mr. Hartke.
And just one other interesting side note, our VA referrals are up at the nursing home, and we're for respite care, so we're, you know, taking care of our veterans there, and also we make just a little more money from the VA than we do with Medicaid, so that's a good thing.
Mr. Hartke, question on that, does that have anything to do with the change in status of Vermillion County Nursing Home? Do we, do we know?
We don't know.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Novke. All those in favor of accepting the report and placing on a file, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to item D, recommendation for the health insurance plan for county employees from fiscal year 2014. I would ask for a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Mr. Esri, may I have a second? And Mr. Harper, Ms. Bucy, would you like to discuss the recommendation?
The Labor Management Health Insurance Committee has been working since June and throughout the month of August, met every week with our broker to come up with a recommendation for a health insurance plan for county employees for fiscal 2014. We looked at, we requested quotes from other vendors, we looked at a quote from only one other vendor, because the other vendors who were contacted declined to quote. We looked at different design plan changes, and in the end, we are recommending effectively the same plan that we have in fiscal 2013, and the only change being that instead of the county's contribution to the HRA for each individual employee being 1,500 of the total $3,000 out-of-pocket maximum, the county's contribution will drop to $1,250, and the employee's contribution will increase to 1,750. And for dependent coverage, the county's contribution will drop from 3,000 to 2,500, and the employee's contribution will increase to 3,500. The overall premium increase is about 8.1%, and just for you to know, 3% of that is in taxes and fees for the Affordable Care Act, which go into effect either in October or January. So, effectively, this plan, which remains the same, is coming in at just under a 5% increase, which I think is really good in today's health insurance environment. So, with that, and, and the, it requires 75% of the membership of the committee to pass any change to the plan design, and this recommendation to shift some of the burden to the employees with regard to the out-of-pocket maximum costs was approved by the committee, including all of the labor representatives.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Bucy? Seeing none, I just make a couple of comments. One, I'd like to thank the members of the Health Insurance Committee. I think they've done great work. It's an example, I think, of how management and labor can work together to make some financially responsible decisions. And especially to thank Mr. John Malkowski, who's the county's insurance broker, who I think did a great job on negotiating this with Health Alliance, including looking at other carriers, and we will certainly be working with him in the future as we look toward the possibility of self-insurance and some other potentially, potential ways that we might be able to save the county some money down the road. All those in favor of sending this to the full board with a recommendation for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Onto budget amendments and transfers. I would like a motion for item E1 and E2. It's a budget transfer and a budget amendment. The total amount is $15,000 to the Public Properties Fund for repair and maintenance of the northeast parking lot at Brookins. If I could have a motion, Mr. Kibler and Mr. James. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item three, item E3, this is a budget amendment, $17,351 from the fund balance to personnel line and administrative services to pay for the deputy county administrator of finance. May I have a motion to send this to the full board? Mr. Kurtz, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Langenheim. And I'd like to ask Ms. Bucy to give us a brief update on this position.
We are in the process of the search. The search committee has narrowed to two finalists, who will be here on Friday for interviews, and we are hoping to come to a decision sometime in the next couple of weeks. This budget amendment gives the maximum flexibility for hiring based on the salary range for this position. Ultimately, if this position is going to be filled at above the midpoint, I will have to come back to the policy committee and ask for authority to do that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Ms. Petrie.
Does, does this appropriation amount that is listed include the benefits, or is this purely salary?
The benefits are not in the general corporate fund budget. There's no need for a budget amendment for those funds, so no, this does not include the fringes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Our final budget amendment is a $20,000 pass-through for an Affordable Care Act grant for the Regional Planning Commission. I would entertain a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Mr. Rosales and Mr. Quisenberry, is there any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Moving on now to the circuit clerk and the circuit court, we have Mr. Howland and Ms. Blakeman and Judge DeFonis here this evening. We have a request first, recommendation for approval of an increase to the law library fee. Motion by Mr. Kibler, is there a second? By Mr. Kurtz. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have a recommendation for approval of the courts automation fund fee increase. May I have a motion? I think I heard Mr. Kurtz and Mr. James. And Ms. Blakeman, would you be willing to speak to that?
This fund we discussed last month at length, the court automation fee is currently set at $10. The statutory maximum is $15, and we are asking for an increase to $15 for all case types, with the exception, with the authorized case types, with the exception of small claims cases and may appear traffic. So, that, this fund supports the purchase of computers for the circuit court and for the circuit clerk's office. It pays for the Jano maintenance contract, which is $100,000 annually. It also pays for salaries and any additional e-business projects that we would undertake. And the, the authorization for spending expenditures from this fund comes from both the circuit clerk and the, and the chief judge of the circuit or his designee, which in this case is the presiding judge of Champaign County. So, Judge DeFonis and myself both sign any purchase orders from this fund. So, we are asking, and in the, the budget projections show that we would have a deficit in this fund at the end of even fiscal year 13, so I don't see any other option but to increase this fee to $15. That's about all I have to say about that fund.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the circuit clerk or any discussion? Ms. Petrie.
I need a reminder, one of the fees that was discussed previously, it's going through the state legislature to raise that maximum. Is that this fee, or is it another one?
Yes, the, the court automation and document storage fees, both. There was a bill introduced in the state legislature this session that would ask for a statutory maximum.
Of 25.
Of 25. It was not called for a vote this session, but it is expected to do so in the, in next year's legislative session. And it was supported by the Illinois Association of Court Clerks. You can see from the comparables that there are many, many counties that are already at the statutory maximum, and they would be seeking an increase to a higher fee if, if they, if that bill were to pass. I'm not asking for that, however.
May I have a follow-up? So, then, should that bill pass?
Mm-hmm.
And the maximum gets raised, do we expect you back here to have a raise to the maximum?
I do not. I do not expect to be coming back next year for an increase to 25 if that were to pass. With the budget projections that you see here, I believe we would be able to cover our projected expenditures with a $15 fee.
Thank you.
Ms. Blakeman, I think when I met with you about these fees, you said in fact that you did not support that bill. Is that, is that correct?
I personally did not, and that is because there was not any mention of consideration for may appear traffic tickets. What happens when you increase this fee in may appear traffic tickets, that decreases the percentage, because you cannot charge more than the $75 that is for a seatbelt ticket, or $120 for a minor speeding offense. If we charge $25 for document storage and court automation, that decreases the percentage that goes to the arresting agency, to the state, which I care less about, but also what comes to the county for the general corporate fund. So, I personally voted no in the association's, but the association did, did vote to support that bill. I voted no, but that's.
Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, and again, this motion relates only to the courts automation fund fee. I'd like all those in favor of sending this to the full board with a recommendation for approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Onto the courts document storage fund fee, there is new information available on our tables tonight related to this, also from Ms. Blakeman.
Yes, last month when we discussed the document storage fee, there were several questions about what we would spend this, this increase in revenue on. So, what I have provided for you this evening are some projected expenditures that I believe that the circuit clerk's office should undertake. These, these include equipment purchases, but they also include professional services. And just to give you a better idea of what we're talking about, because I think it's hard to really understand, I don't have just a couple of file cabinets I'm talking about sending off to be microfilmed, it's a much larger scope than that. And that is just to, to help you understand better, I took some photographs for you and put some dollar amounts associated with each of the projects that I, that I believe that, that we need to complete. This photograph, the, these, the series of photographs here represents our current budget. This is what we are spending approximately every year on microfilming. And that is, we are only right now microfilming our current cases. So, as they come up for a destruction date, we send those, those case files off to be microfilmed, and once they have been microfilmed, they can, a copy of the microfilm stays in our office, and one copy goes to the state archives, and then we can destroy the paper records. If we did not do that, as you can see from these photographs. If we did not do that, as you can see from these photographs, we would run out of space rather quickly. With an average of 40,000 cases annually in paper case files, we would quickly run out of space. So that represents just our current budget. You know, we, we pay for salaries, we pay for the public, the online public access system, which provides free public access to all of our court, the, the public records that we have, not including the pounded or sponge files. But that, this represents our current budget. Some additional expenditures that I believe we will need. One, these are some equipment purchases. The photographs of scanners I'm, I'm using to illustrate them, we're not talking about your printer scanner fax that you have in your office. These are large equipment purchases. Those scanners handle hundreds and thousands of pages per day. It's really quite interesting to see them in, in action, but. And this also represents our microfilm machine, which we're required to have by statute. And if it were to break down, it would cost us approximately $20,000 to replace. We don't have a current replacement schedule for these scanners, and I believe we should be replacing at least one of them annually. We have five of them, and if one of them were to break down, I would have an employee doing absolutely nothing. Well, I could find other things for them to do, but they wouldn't be doing their regular tasks until such time that we could replace those scanners. We are scanning all case types with the exception of tax cases at this time. One of the other projects, and this is a quote from Source HOV, which is the, the vendor that we use for most of our microfilming and, and imaging. These are index books. Many of them are still in use by our office. It's the only index that we have for, so if we want to find which old criminal file, we have to look in the index first before we can go and pull that file. If somebody's coming to look for their grand, great-great-grandfather's will, we have to look in the index book first. These are not in good condition, and that's part of what I'm trying to illustrate with some of the photographs here. It would cost us $60,000 to have all of those index books filmed and imaged. This slide, I wish you could see it better here, but this slide represents some of the historical significance of some of these materials. The, the photos on the left, that is a docket book from the 1850s, 1840s to 1850s, and it lists Lincoln as the attorney of record. This book is not in great condition, and this is the only copy that we have. And we stumbled upon this as we were looking through other index books. So I honestly have no idea how many other materials like this there are in the stacks and stacks of index books that we have. So I, I give this, I showed this to you to help you understand the importance of preserving these records. Some of the Lincoln materials that we had that had his signature, this is only the clerk's signature designating that he was the attorney of record, but the things with his signature had already been given to the Lincoln Museum and, and library in Springfield. But this is just to help illustrate for you the historical significance. This is a photograph from our basement storage. These are the flat probate files, which include the wills that we are required to keep indefinitely. But however, we are not required to keep the paper of the, the probate file itself. So if the will had been probated, we don't necessarily need to keep the paper for that. We can send it to be microfilmed. It represents quite a lot of space, and if we were able to send those off to be microfilmed, it would free up quite a bit of space for us. Or if, if those files were requested by the state archives, if they'd like the paper, we can provide that to them as well. The paper wills, we will keep indefinitely, but they need to be in will cabinets and not just in, on shelves as they are currently. And that would cost approximately $95,000. These are trifold probate files. We have many, many cubic feet of trifold probate files. They, in order to have them filmed and imaged, the quote I received from HOV was $145,000. Finally, for these types of files, we have the common law and county court case files, and they are trifold. And here, I'm just trying to illustrate to you what the condition that many of these files are in and the dates. The one on the left has a date of 1886. And we are just keeping the paper. And to let you know, it isn't just a, an irrational fear of destruction of these records. Last summer, we had a flood in, in this basement storage space. The circuit clerk office kitchen is directly above this storage space, and something happened with the ice maker on the fridge. And luckily, somebody came in over the weekend, and had they not discovered it, we probably would have lost all of these files. As it was, we had to send them to be professionally dried, or whatever it is that they do. So, but that is just to illustrate the condition of these records and the historical significance of them. I do actually get requests for these sometimes. There are media requests for some old murder trials and things like that. And they are all public records. Drainage district files. This is something that we have discussed. I know the county board has had a lot of interest in drainage districts recently. And this is to let you know that we have in our office many of the original drainage district files. Some of them are at the Champaign County Historical Archives at the Urbana Free Library, but most of them are in my office. And I would very much like to film and image all of these records. We are very interested in undertaking a project with the GIS department to plot all of the drainage districts so that those citizens who would like to look up which drainage district they live in, they would be able to do so online. It would help us with our assessments. It would also help with the drainage district election process, because this would allow us to actually print a list of eligible voters for each district. So when those drainage district elections happen, the commissioners who serve as the election judges would be able to check off a list of eligible voters. So this is a project that I really feel is, is of vital importance to the county, and I estimate that it would cost us about $25,000.
Thank you. Ms. Schwartz.
I'm not going to speak to the necessity of this, because I have no idea if you need it or not, so I'm assuming you do. But I'm more concerned about the process. So you recall that when you came to us the first time with a request to bring it up from 5 to 15, many of these were not in the budget projection, and therefore the fund balance was going to be climbing up. And so we raised the concern of why are we raising fees if we don't need the fees? And so I understand you went back to look at what the real needs are, but my concern is the process, because it could appear, I'm not suggesting it is, but the appearance is, that once we brought up the concern about why are you raising fees if you don't need the money, we suddenly backtracked and said, oh, well, actually, we could use the money. So I'm just requesting that in the future, we're going to be much more careful in the first time when the budget or fee request comes in and document all these, or wait for the following year, because it just doesn't look good.
Well, I did mention most of these projects last month. I just didn't have dollar figures to attach to them. I was waiting for quotes from our vendor, and that's what I received last week, which is why I was able to put this presentation together. In my discussions with, last month and with other county board members, I have mentioned all of these projects. None of this is, these are projects that I have been talking with the, the state archives about, and they're projects that I've been talking with Source HOV, who is our, our primary vendor. There are not many vendors who can provide these services, but I understand your concerns. I can.
As I said, I'm not doubting that those are necessary, but the appearance should matter as well.
Okay.
Ms. Burksen.
Just a sort of a common sense question. Why is there a kitchen over your archival storage files?
I didn't plan the courthouse. You can, I don't have an answer to that. It's not ideal. There are just a couple other projects here, one of which I only learned about this past week, this, this final slide here. The movable storage units that I, that I showed a photograph of earlier. We've had, we've been having many issues with those, where the, the cranks are not turning and we're not able to move the storage. In discussion with the repair person, their recommendation, they, they told me that their recommendation when the courthouse was renovated was that we install a subfloor so that in case the building were to shift, there, it would not affect the tracks that these movable storage move on. That is not what was done. They were, the rails were embedded in concrete. And I, I'm just beginning to learn, this happened just last week, so I'm just trying to find out what happened. I'm trying to get documentation from the vendor of what they submitted to the contractor at that time. But regardless, their recommendation ultimately is going to be that we install a subfloor. The movable storage in the basement does have a subfloor, but for whatever reason, the one on our main floor does not. So that is something, I don't know what the cost will be, but I'm including that here just for your information. One slide that I don't have any photographs because of the sensitive nature of that, of those materials, is our evidence locker, which is quite full and has very sensitive information and could, materials that we cannot house anywhere offsite. I know that has been a recommendation in the past, but I don't feel comfortable with the security level. You know, the materials that we, that we house there include weapons, they include documentary evidence, they include evidence from many, many criminal felony cases, and I, I would not feel comfortable housing them anywhere but in the courthouse. We have the chain of evidence, chain of custody for that evidence, and we have multiple levels of security there, a number of additional keys that you have to use to get into these additional spaces, so.
Ms. Court.
Can you recollect long time ago that they started imaging over there at the courthouse? I guess about the late 80s, early 90s. So, but what you're saying is that the process never went through?
Well, the circuit clerk's office has continually microfilmed the current cases, the more modern cases, as they come up for a destruction date. But the, the older materials have been done at times when there is funding available. But that is part of the reason that the fund balance has depleted. Those, some of those earlier projects were completed. Other than the 150 or so index books that we have now, most of the index books were, were filmed and, and imaged at an earlier date. So that's where some of the, the expenditures from the fund balance went in, in past years, so that, that fund balance has since depleted. This fee increase hasn't, this fee has not increased since, I believe it was the, the 80s, so that it, since its inception. So that, there has not been an increase in revenue, so we have not been able to complete some of these other projects.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the circuit clerk? May I have a motion to accept the circuit clerk's recommendation for this fee increase and forward it to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Moved by Mr. Harper, seconded by Mr., I'll give this one to Mr. McGuire. Any additional questions, discussion, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
That motion carries. Thank you. Let me update my consent list real quick. I'll move on to the nursing home board of directors. First item is item G1. This is a recommendation for renewal of the compliance, compliance services agreement with MPA through June 30, 2014. May I have a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Mr. Kurtz, may I have a second?
Second.
Purposes of discussion. Ms. Burksen, Mr. Guima is here to, to speak to this. I would point out a couple of things. One, this is obviously a separate contract in the MPA management contract. This is a continuation of the agreement that we reached last year to provide compliance services. And I would further point out that we have a revised version of this on our desks. The dollar amount has been corrected to reflect the 10-month term of this contract as opposed to a 12-month term. Mr. Guima, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. I also have Karen Nowke, my administrator, and Josh Drake, who is my admissions slash corporate compliance officer, and they're here to answer any questions that you would have about the corporate compliance program. So in your packet, and I won't go through everything that's in there, but if you turn the page, I believe 61 in your packet, there's a table that shows the current status of the implementation of the corporate compliance program at the nursing home. So you can see, we've got six specific areas of implementation. Areas one through four have basically been completed except for the board of directors' education, which is an online self-study education program through the county's MindFlash system. And it is ongoing because we just haven't had all of the board of directors complete that self-education. Item number six, updates and improvements, is an ongoing process of reviewing updates on the regulation guidances by the OIG and any program implementation updates. As we move into next year, our focus will be on item number five, which is the audit and monitoring procedure development. And so that will start sometime later this month or into October. And the transition that we're seeing is from an implementation of the program to an actual ongoing audit and monitoring process of our compliance activities, or our ongoing operational activities. And now we have to basically review, prioritize areas of risks that we want to review and to see if we are meeting all the state and federal regulations for those processes. So again, to review, and it's not in this packet, and I just realized that.
Is there a file there that you guys played by August 21st? That was last one.
Yes. What we are developing is a, a fairly substantial auditing and monitoring policy book that lists all the areas that need to be audited within the compliance program. And so at the time this was written, that was not quite completed, and it, basically we've just got a couple more Ts to cross and Is to dot, and that will be then sent to the nursing home so that we will then move into the auditing and monitoring process. So just to review.
I'm sorry, Scott. Ms. Michaels.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What is your projected date on here, then, for item five?
Literally any day.
Okay.
Ms. Petrie, are you, are you recognized?
I, I do. I'm a little confused by how you introduce this. You said the focus for next year is going to be Roman numeral five, yet we see it was supposed to be completed at August of 2013, and your response to Ms. Michaels doesn't have any logic based on what you, how you introduced the topic.
So that item is the procedures for doing the auditing and monitoring. Once that procedure book is completed, which will be completed any day, then we will move forward into the actual auditing and monitoring processes at the nursing home. So we're developing the tools to develop, to do the auditing and monitoring. Then we'll start actually doing the auditing and monitoring.
Mr. Harkey, did you have your hands up?
No.
I'm sorry. My bad. Ms. Michaels.
I apologize. Going into this compliance program, it says responsible for designing and overseeing implementation, not ongoing management. I guess maybe where I'm a little confused, Scott, is I understand that you had to put the policies and the procedures together, and then you're implementing them. But somehow I feel that we're still in the process of putting together policies and procedures, which probably should have been done in this 11-month period.
Okay, so we're.
So I'm confused.
Okay. So there are two separate set of policies. So if, in item number three, Roman numeral number three, you have the development of policies and procedures that target organization-specific compliance risks. Those are the general compliance policies. The compliance program is going to do this, it's going to do that. Item number five, or Roman number five, is the actual policies that we're developing that says, when we audit billing practices, this is the questions that will be asked when we review a specific claim. Another procedure, auditing procedure will be documentation of care plans. Another one would be documentation of therapy documentation. And they all have a specific auditing checklist. And they all have a specific auditing checklist that we are putting together. So we're talking about two distinct policy books or policy manuals.
Mr. Alex, may I ask?
Yes, please. Sorry, I had to check it out over there.
No, 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 that's fine. Okay, so what I'm hearing is that number five is not done. That's, okay, and you're working on that.
Right, so the policy, I want to make sure it's clear. The policy, policy development of how we're going to audit and monitoring areas of risk is almost completed. Then we will be moving into the ongoing actual auditing process.
The implementation. I, I guess here when it says witness manager shall be responsible for designing and overseeing implementation, I guess designing to me is creating, and you're kind of saying it's already been created, so I, that's where I was getting confused with this. And then as a side note to this, I thought that part of this compliance was part of the agreement with MPA, that they had some sort of a, part of their original overall agreement included parts of this compliance that we needed to have done. And therefore, we wouldn't be charged extra for the things that were already in the MPA contract that, that had to do with compliance. Am I, I'm thinking back here.
Any of the corporate compliance responsibilities were never.
In the contract to begin with?
Tended to be covered, because corporate compliance was not around at the time of the management contract.
Okay.
And again, the differentiation is with the management contract, we're always making sure to, that we are following all the rules and regulations. But now the OIG is saying, now you have to prove it. You have to have that paper trail that shows that you are periodically reviewing all your processes to make sure that you're compliant. That was never mandated by the federal government. Now that process is mandated as a condition of participation in the Medicare and Medicaid program. So that is the big difference that we're dealing with today than we were a few years ago.
Ms. Petrie, I believe you're next.
I do. Thank you very much. Okay, so number six, what do you see as the timeline for those six cells?
What page are you on?
I'm on page 61. Roman numeral six, Updates and Improvements.
Updates and improvements will always be in an ongoing process because corporate compliance, areas of focus by the OIG changes on an annual basis. So literally almost every month, there is a new report that's put out by the OIG, and if it pertains to the nursing home business, we will develop a policy that addresses that, and then it will be added into the policy book. And then we will also add it to the auditing and monitoring procedure policy book and determine where on the level of risk we will prioritize of whether we will actually implement an audit process in that fiscal year or not. So the compliance program is a live, living, breathing, I'll call it beast, because OIG almost on an annual basis, they put out a work plan. And every year they have new areas of focus, sometimes it continue past areas of focus. And so, for example, I was just looking this up. Right now, the OIG's general area of high-risk areas are federal anti-kickback statutes, resident safety, reserved bed arrangements and payments, HIPAA, high-tech, sufficient staffing, proper recording of case mix, use of psychotropic medications, comprehensive care plans, medication management, anti-supplementation, therapy services, physician self-referral, and hospice. Now, specific reports that have come out by the OIG just this year include under quality of care, they want to make sure that our care plans reflect the actual care that's being given in the facility. They're also taking a look at hospices and the marketing practices and financial relationships with nursing facilities. So that's a new policy that we've put together to address that. Another one that popped up this year is payments for alien beneficiaries unlawfully present in the United States on the dates of services that were provided by Medicare. So they want us to make sure that we are not providing Medicare services to alien beneficiaries, which means that we have to check on their alien status or residency status in the United States. So again, every year we have new items that the OIG is focusing on, and we have to incorporate those into the OIG, into our, I'm sorry, into our corporate compliance program.
I think, let me get Ms. Schwartz in here, and then we'll come back to you, Ms. Petrie. And I see Mr. Kibler. Any other hands? I'm sorry, I was distracted there for a minute. And Mr. Maxwell, thank you.
As much as none of us likes compliance programs, could you remind us what's the penalty for not complying? Because as far as I recall, it was pretty steep if something is not so. I, I mean, I would like to kind of take it into consideration that as much as we don't like to do that, I don't think we can really afford to, but.
Unfortunately, I do not have memorized, oh, the OIG just came out with some additional guidance on fines and penalties. And I, I'll be perfectly honest, I have not read that entire document. But what I can give you is some examples of what nursing homes, their fines that they've been hit with. And it is in your packet. I just need to find the page.
Okay.
All right. Actually, on page 63. And I again apologize that the bullets in my Word file do not show up when I PDF my Word documents. In the middle of page 63, where it says nursing homes are increasingly being targeted by the OIG as described below, a Tennessee-based nursing home manager and its related ancillary affiliates agreed to pay 2.7 million to resolve allegations that its therapy claims were medically unnecessary and reasonable. Second item, an Iowa nursing home paid a $675,000 settlement for overbilling Medicare therapy services. Third bullet, a nursing home company paid 953,000 to resolve allegations that it provided unnecessary services. Next item, a chain of nursing homes is charged with violating the False Claims Act by encouraging therapists to bill higher amounts and perform more expensive therapy, and that is an ongoing investigation. And then the last item, or example, is a nursing home in Virginia and its owners agreed to pay $700,000 to resolve liability under False Claims Act for submitting claims to Medicare for non-reimbursable therapy to 37 residents. Other, a more recent example of which we don't know what the fines are going to be is Advocate Healthcare had two laptop computers stolen. And those laptops were not password protected or encrypted, and our trade publications are saying this is probably the single largest HIPAA or patient health information violation ever recorded. I mean, they're talking about thousands of patient information going back years. And again, the trade publications are saying that the penalties that Advocate is going to get hit with are going to be staggering. And they have a corporate compliance program. So now, what the corporate compliance program does, it does not eliminate penalties and fines. The corporate compliance program requires self-disclosure. So the benefit that you get is instead of treble damages, damages, it'll be just single damages or actual fines instead of tripling the fines. So it does not eliminate getting to hot water with the OIG, but they do yield a lighter stick. Now, one of the other things that the OIG, and I call this the oxymoron policy, and it's written in this document, is that while compliance programs are mandated, required for all nursing homes, the OIG has also very explicitly stated that a non-functioning corporate compliance program is worse than not having a compliance program. Well, you don't have the option of not having a compliance program, so the only, only option that you have is to make sure that your corporate compliance is a 100% working compliance program. And I've had these discussions with other clients and potential clients that says, well, can we get away with a Chevrolet instead of a Cadillac? And our response is, unfortunately, no. You have to have a Cadillac program, because if you have a Chevy program, you're going to get hit pretty hard by the OIG. And again, there's no experience at this point on what happens if the OIG goes after a facility that does not have an effective working compliance program. Now, I can tell you that there is a large nursing home chain based in Tennessee that is currently under investigation. They have a corporate compliance department. There are allegations of false claims in actual reporting to their corporate compliance department, which didn't do anything to address these issues, and we're still waiting to see what the outcome of this investigation is. And so that will probably be one of the first cases in which an entity actually had a corporate compliance program, and to see how the OIG views that particular corporation.
Before we anger all the Chevrolet owners out there, let me go to Mr. Kibler.
And I apologize for that analogy.
I am a Chevrolet owner, so that'll be my first line of discussion. Actually, when this came about a year or two ago, there was a great amount of detail over verbiage of our original contract, which is what Ms. Michaels was talking about. What is the definition of compliance? Because compliance is in the original contract, but because this is part of the Affordable Care Act, that opened up a whole new umbrella. At that time, we had the same discussion that this is a no-brainer. Being able to follow law is a no-brainer, and therefore, we should be doing it anyways. So to add a contract which causes us to spend $80,000 over a two-year period, if not higher over, of course, over three years, is crazy to some people, me included. But we passed it. It got through. We needed it because the Affordable Care Act was coming through the pike, and it was imminent that everything had to be done, I believe, by February of this year. I know that we're not done. Doesn't seem like we're done. But that's okay, because I'm sure a lot of people also are not done. Couple of questions, and this, this is the first question to the Nursing Home Board members here. Have you been brought up to speed on this compliance program and given more goals and targets as opposed to, yes, we completed it? And do you feel like it's been satisfactory to this point? Or maybe you don't know and can maybe come back with an answer later on. We may still vote on it today. But I would love to have the Nursing Home Board's opinion on how our compliance program is, is, is working.
I'm going to let Mr. Harkey jump in here, because I think he can answer that.
Okay. We're going through a lot here. You know, I'll tell you what, this is my kind of thing, this is more of a general comment about MPA and their contract, is that if MPA wasn't doing what they were doing, we would have to hire another administrator, we'd have to have probably a finance person, a lobbyist, someone, a PR person. We would have to hire a separate corporate compliance person if we don't do this, I mean, to follow these kind of regs. I think we're getting a real good deal for the 40 grand. Yes, it's something we're going to have to continually manage, but I think it's a, a good progress. I think you're right. You know, following the law is important, plus also, this is going to help us with, hopefully, with our quality of care issues to, to be more compliant. Again, you know, we could argue all night whether it was in the contract or not. I think we've kind of, by accepting this contract originally, admitted that it's not. So we're kind of where, where we are because of that, and we need to move forward in completing this project. And if we don't renew this contract, then we're going to have to look at personnel or some other resource to complete it. So I certainly urge people to go ahead and vote, vote to extend this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Harkey. Mr. Kibler, do you want to respond to Mr. Harkey? I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit off the.
Yeah, I would actually still like a response back to the original question of what the Nursing Home Board feels about the, so far the progress of this program. Because it is an add-on program, it's something that is under the guise of the Nursing Home Board. That said, I do want to respond to your comment. In other nursing homes that aren't publicly funded, how they pay for it is they have the nursing home administrator do it, or be part of a team that doesn't internally. We can talk about all day about how we needed this to happen, because we did. It, it was something that was imminent and came immediately, therefore, we had to do it because we were between a rock and a hard place. I'm not going to disagree with you, Mr. Harkey, one bit. But I will say that at this point, we're a year later, these are things that were no-brainer items that were from last year. I want to see the progress of what, what our money has gotten to this point. And I'm hoping that the Nursing Home Board can come up with, with something that it can measure whether or not this is a good compliance program. Because if I'm not mistaken, this is also being implemented in other counties as well that are under MPA's control at this point. So that's a good thing. So we are under, we are working with others. But I would like an opinion from our Nursing Home Board. And that actually parlay's itself to my second question, but because there is no response from the Nursing Home Board at this point, I'll hold off on that, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we get Gary in here? He's been, he's been chapping at the bit over there.
Oh, well, I've kind of, going to end, be in between, I think, these discussions. And I had some comments that I was going to address to Scott anyway. And I'm, I, I'll have to admit guilt, I think I'm the guy that talked about a Chevrolet instead of a Cadillac at the Nursing Home Board of Directors. I have expressed my concern about the cost of this new add-on extension, I guess you call it. It's a 10-month period that will bring us to the end of their current general contract. Is that correct, Deb? Personally, I felt like we could buy the plan, and we could have the auditing and monitoring done by staff. And updates and improvements could be done much less expensive than the $3,300 a month plus contract fee that is being proposed. I don't think, I'm not sure that the risks are all that bad if we do nothing. We could either send this thing back for renegotiation, we could do nothing, and be, have ourselves open a little bit to the risk. This is something that we'll have to decide whether or not we want to accept that kind of risk for the next 10 months. Or we could ask for an RFP for a new vendor on this particular issue. I realize that that doesn't, it takes some time, but at least you would have the opportunity to see what you think of another vendor.
I'm going to have to get Mr. McGuire in here. He's been waiting. I'll get back to you, Mr. Harkey.
Sure, thank you. I, I just agree with Mr. Kibler. I think that the nursing home has been under, hasn't been compliant for a lot of rules and regulations over the last few years, not only just the new ones that have come more recently that we're paying an extra $40,000 for. And, and I don't know, I understand why we have to pay another $40,000 for them to comply to, to these new regulations. So why we needed initial contract to, to do that, which should, there should have been an expectation that they had to continue to do what they were doing in the first place, which was comply to federal regulation.
Ms. Schwartz.
I just want to jump in. I don't think, I don't know why we have the authority to argue about voting on the contract, but the 40,000 is not paid by us. We don't pay it out of General Corp. It's paid up by the Nursing Home Fund, and it's money that they cover. We haven't paid anything to the nursing home since 2008. So as much as all of us love to micromanage, when we have the sheriff have his budget, which we actually do give money to, we don't go and go into every contract he writes and everything he does and say, well, we should do it and he shouldn't do it. And this is not even money we are providing. This is the nursing home covering their own costs. And so as much as we all love to debate it, I seriously don't understand why we even consider not approving it if the nursing home has a budget that they cover through their own revenues. The Nursing Home Board presumably approved it. We can debate it all night, but I seriously don't see the value of that.
Ms. Petrie, and/or Mr. Harkey, in whatever order you want to go.
I'll speak to specifics here. I think the idea of going with a separate vendor for a compliance, when we've already got MPA in the building that knows how everything works, is insane. And also, you know, yes, a private company would find its man, have an administrator do it, but if that administrator is already putting in 60 hours a week in their administration facilities, they would have to hire a staff assistant or someone to help move forward on this. It's all about management of resources. If you want to look at adding additional staff to handle this as full-time county employees at the nursing home, fine, but I think the idea of contracting this out for now, for the remaining 10 months of the MPA contract, we'll get the resolution, let them move forward, and then when we look at the entire contract in 10 months, then we can put it all into one and negotiate that this is part of the general contract rather than an add-on because of a change in law.
Ms. Petrie.
Thank you very much. I did not support it originally, and I still can't support what's, this add-on contract, and even more so now that I have learned by talking to various other nursing homes that they did handle this in-house without adding more staff. And to respond to Ms. Schwartz's comment that this is coming out of the nursing home budget, indeed it is. However, the nursing home budget is extremely tight. However, the nursing home budget is extremely tight. The Nursing Home Board of Directors is talking about trying to find money to do maintenance things at the nursing home, and so, you know, whether Everett Dirksen actually said a million here, a million there, and it all adds up, it does all add up. And so, we're spending money, we're, it's put before us to approve this expenditure when I was concerned originally why it couldn't be done in-house, and I continue to be equally concerned why it isn't being done in-house.
Ms. Burksen.
I disagree with Mr. Kibler that it's easy to follow the law. I think if you're running a nursing home, it's not a bit easy to comply with the law. And this report was not compliance. It's a new compliance report, a bureaucratic nightmare that only Washington could think up, which has nothing, very little to do with compliance, but it's this huge new requirement thing that you have to fill in 100,000 little squares.
Mr. Kurtz.
To take the chance or the risk of violating any of these laws, of not complying with the federal government is not something I want to get into. I personally do not see us having to spend $30,000 or $35,000 on this program that is mandated by the federal government and will cost us a heck of a lot more if we're not using, and I call Mr. Gima in-house, working on this, okay? And if you look, just take a quick look at some of the samples of what happens when the government wants to come in and pull the strings. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, maybe millions of dollars, because once they make an adjudication, good luck trying to change it. We need to be spanky-clean, ready to go if they come in and audit us, and we need to be ready to answer all their questions and have everything on the dotted line, all the i's, all the t's, and make sure that they understand that we're complying 100% with the law based on, as Ms. Burksen says, only Washington can think up something like this. And if you look at what the nursing home has to go through on a day-to-day basis by just taking care of the residents, but not having to go through all this bureaucratic minutia, I have other terms I could have used, understand how much pressure they're under on a daily basis to not only comply with all of the state and federal laws that they have to comply with, but to take care of the residents and do a good job taking their care. So, I would say we extend this contract, let the nursing home do what it needs to do, and they're doing it 100% correctly in my estimation. Thank you.
Mr. Kibler.
Two quick questions for Mr. Gima. First of all, if for some reason it was voted down today, which I do believe it'll be voted up, if it were to be voted down, would we then be non-compliant per regulations based upon what we've done? When would we become non-compliant is the question number one, just out of curiosity?
If the process stops now, you would be non-compliant. The options that you would have to get in compliance is to add the resources that would be necessary to continue the compliance program. And I think I am safe in saying that Josh would not be able to handle that responsibility by himself with his other marketing and mission responsibilities, and we would have to add additional FTE, at least another FTE to help. But the other thing that MPA provides is, if you want to call it expertise, I won't put myself in that category, but we have two healthcare attorneys. When we started this, we had one who had a healthcare attorney background. We have added a second attorney in our office to help with our compliance activities, and that person actually happens to be, has a history, a long history of experience on the plaintiff's attorney's side, so it brings a different perspective. But they have the healthcare law background. Now, we're not providing legal services, but that type of background, when you're reviewing these regulations and developing the policies, because Karen and Josh or anyone else in that facility was not writing those policies. And I can tell you, Josh just told me today, he said if he had to write those policies, I would have to pay him a heck of a lot more. Actually, I don't know if he would even undertake those responsibilities, but the work that a single individual would have with corporate compliance is absolutely unmanageable. And I can't address what these other facilities are doing, but in our opinion, when we were reviewing, how do we do a compliance program? A single standalone person with no prior compliance experience is going to be very, very hard-pressed to put together a comprehensive, ongoing compliance program. And that's the reason why we developed this program, to help our clients meet the requirements that are now mandated by the feds.
Okay, I've got Mr. James and Mr. Carter, then Mr. Langenheim.
Oh, yes, Scott, when I'm hearing all this, I understand because contracts always get built in some other things, no matter what it is. But one thing that Patsy always brings up to me, which is interesting in this case, we're putting our trust in you that this is going to meet muster, so to speak. But so far, some of the items aren't complete as you thought. I guess my question would be, if it doesn't meet muster, who's on the hook? The county? Or is your firm going to back their work?
We are not taking any liability. It's still, I mean, it's the county's nursing home. It is not MPA's nursing home. So, we're providing support to assist the nursing home to get the compliance activities in place. It is not MPA's compliance program. We're working with the nursing. It's like our management services. It's not our nursing home, but we help operate that facility. We're helping operate and manage the compliance program with the staff at the nursing home because, again, we believe it is physically, mentally, and whatever impossible for the staff at the nursing home to be able to handle this.
And I understand that. Again, I go back to, we're relying on you to meet what is being designated by the law. And listening to the Board of Health members, I just wonder if anybody really has a handle on what's being required and to make sure that we're getting the finished product that we should get so that there are no legal issues. Because what you said a minute ago is if we're not in compliance, and so, let's say this doesn't pass muster by the OIG, we spent all this money for not. So, I would think that board would probably need to do, in my estimation, a little bit more homework on what's out there. And I do agree with you because I know a lady that just got hired out of state, and if this board knew what her salary was to do this, they'd all probably be choking. But it's not just the money issue in my mind. It's this, I hear it all the time from contractors, and we just heard about a subfloor earlier. You can tell me what you want to tell me, and you're the one that knows, but if I'm putting my neck out there, I want to make sure that this board and everybody else is getting the product. I promised them I'm going to deliver. So, what I'm asking you, point-blank, is that product, to your knowledge, going to meet what the law is now requiring?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter.
My friend asked some of my questions, but I'm still trying to figure out. We build a nursing, new nursing home that we thought was going to get rid of some of the problem. But it seemed to me, man, every time we turn around, we have a lot of problems, and we have a board. What is this board doing? I worked with the Phil Goodman all my life, and I'm going to tell you, they never throw a new guideline on you. You know it's coming because they invite you to come to the seminar. If you've got something coming up new, they're going to send you a notice. Now, if you sit there and don't attend these seminars, you are in trouble. It seems like that's what we do. We have a board that's sitting there and not really putting their eye on the ball. And this is ridiculous. Maybe we need to clean house. Because some is not coachy here, brother. Some just not, some not, you know. I never see such a messed-up management in all my life.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Let's go to Mr. Langenheim.
I'm calling for a roll call vote.
Do we have another? We have several people calling for a roll call vote. I think Mr. Quisenberry is next.
I intend to support that, and I'm going to call the question.
I have a call for the question in a second. Call for the question requires two-thirds vote to cut off debate. All in favor of calling the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to a vote. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Kibler?
No.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Langenheim?
Yes.
Maxwell? McGuire?
No.
Michaels?
Yeah.
Mitchell?
No.
Petrie?
No.
Quisenberry?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Burksen?
Yes.
Carter? Covert?
Whoa.
Esri?
Yes.
Harper?
No.
Hartkey?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
No.
Alex?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item two under the Nursing Home Board of Directors, this is a recommendation to approve private pay room rates for fiscal year 2014. May I have a motion to send this to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Moved by Mr. Maxwell, seconded by Mr. Harky. Comments, questions, or discussion? Ms. Petrie.
I would like to hear from our two liaisons to the Nursing Home Board, what type of analysis was done to generate the rates being proposed, and was there any discussion as to whether these rates will have any dilatory effect of people choosing the nursing home when they are private pay?
Mr. Maxwell, do you want to take that one?
I'll try to answer that. There was a survey done that shows we're competitive with the other homes in the area, pretty much, for private pay. And quite frankly, we need the money to help with our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion carries. Next, under item H1, we have an approval, requesting approval for application for a grant for the Emergency Management Agency. I may have a motion, Mr. Jay and Mr. Richards. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to the county administrator, we have General Corporate Fund fiscal year 2013 budget report and budget change report on our desks. Deb, do you want to speak to that?
You'll see from the budget projection report that revenues are staying fairly consistent with where they have been. The sales taxes continue to come in fairly strong. Right now, the quarter cent is the only one that doesn't look like it will achieve 100% of the budget. However, it's still coming in at 1.7% ahead of where it was at this same time last year. The income tax is coming in much ahead of projection, as is the corporate personal property replacement tax and the use tax. Local government revenue, this is fees and fines are probably where we're seeing the most significant under realization of what was projected with the budget. And I am told that particularly with traffic cases, there has been a great decline as a result of the Illinois State Police not writing as many tickets and our own local agencies not writing as many tickets, which results in less revenue coming in in those general fees and fines lines. Overall, though, we still anticipate seeing 101% of our revenue for fiscal '13. In the expenditure side, we continue to underspend personnel, and basically, all areas except purchase document stamps where we're seeing an increase in real estate transactions, which also translates into an increase in revenue. So, for the summary at this point, based on the projected budget, we would anticipate ending this fiscal year revenue positive in the amount of about $487,000, which would put us at a 14.5% fund balance. And as you will recall, that is as of November 30th, when we go to the fiscal '14 budget and we move the time of the fund balance back a month, that will drop. So, it's good to go into '14, hopefully, with a little bit healthier fund balance to accommodate for that 13th month in the fiscal '14 budget. Then, the budget change report, the only thing that has changed since last month was the fact that last month, the auditor's account position was increased from part-time to full-time.
Thank you, Ms. Bucy. And can you remind me when typically we would pay, we would repay the public safety sales tax loan to General Corporate?
The public safety sales tax loan to General Corporate?
From General Corporate.
Which, the public safety sales tax...
We borrow from the public safety sales tax fund.
No, we don't borrow from it. The Public Safety Sales Tax Fund reimburses General Corporate for the cost of utilities.
No, I'm talking about the loan that the treasurer...
Oh, that, I'm sorry. The loan that doesn't ever hit the budget.
Right.
Yeah. That will be paid back most likely in October after all the property tax monies have been received.
Okay, thank you. I may have a motion to accept the county administrator. I was starting to think I was in the Twilight Zone there. Can place it on file. I have Mr. James and Mr. Quisenberry, all those in favor of accepting the report and placing it on file, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item three has been removed from the agenda, just FYI. The county administrator is going to be discussing this with Labor Committee. We will probably have a closed session at the full board meeting to discuss this. This is related to health insurance premium contributions from non-bargaining employees, and we'll talk more about that at the full board. Item four under county administrator is a resolution establishing compensation for the interim facilities director, which is a follow-on to the closed session that we had at the last meeting. May I have a recommendation, or may I have a motion, excuse me, Mr. Kurtz? Seconded by Mr. Harky. Ms. Bucy, would you like to speak to this? Are there any questions for Ms. Bucy? I think we all know what this is. Seeing no further discussion or questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? That motion carries. Our last item, we have an intercommittee memo from the Facilities Committee regarding repair and maintenance of parking lots. The Facilities Committee has asked that, what's the number?
$32,000.
$32,000 be placed in the fiscal year 2014 draft budget for parking lot repair. If someone would like to, we can make a motion to treat this the same as the other facilities' request, as the county administrator put it in the draft budget and look at it in the context of all the other requests. Moved by Mr. Harky, seconded by Mr. Kurtz. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I have just a very, I have no other business. I have a very brief chairs report. Ms. Bucy is working on a presentation that sort of unifies all the county board's likely options with regard to the General Corporate Fund budget, including fee increases, the various new program and budget requests that are in the draft budget. And what we're proposing is that after the ILPP report is delivered and we have a final recommendation from them, as of the full board meeting, I will ask that we schedule a finance committee, the whole meeting, for October 1st, I believe that's a Tuesday, and that at that date, we attempt to work our way through all of the remaining General Corporate Fund budget issues. I do not need a motion for that. It's just FYI. Semi-annual review of closed session minutes from the finance committee. My understanding is the state's attorney has recommended that we keep them all closed. I would ask for a motion to do so. Mr. Kibler and Mr. Rosales, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Items for consent, A2, D1, F1 and 2, H1, and I4, and that concludes finance. Thank you, Mr. ... A motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.